Alrighty, welcome everybody to our April 25th work session. Glad to see you here. Next week we'll have Mr. Bailey do our invocation pledge. We'll have the Appalachian High School J R O T C present the colors. We will have a clean and safe school committee report from Mr. Kane. Lots of fun recognitions. And so we will jump into the superintendent's department reports. Dr. Green?
The reception support is there for your review. Unless you have questions, then send them on forward.
Awesome, thank you sir. Alrighty, Ms. Houston?
Good evening. Tonight I'll go over my invoices between $10,000 and $24,999 for the month of April. The first one is Aiken Sports paid out of the general fund for $24,500 for 2018 Ford Explorer for transportation. The next one is Georgia Department of Education came out of various funding sources, $16,668 for audit costs for the federal programs for fiscal year 2022. The next one is M D Enterprises Pro Panels paid out of Esser Funds for $22,777 for purchase of panel equipment for Visual Arts Program. And that's to be used district wide. The next one is Walsworth Yearbooks paid out of Winderberry High School School Funds for $12,981. And that's for the 2022 yearbooks. There was some disputes with how much they were to owe, so it took them a while to pay this invoice, but they were just trying to dispute the bill. B N H Photo Video paid out of Capital Project Funds for $13,996 for 350 U S B C multimedia hub adapters. And that's district wide. The next one is the Lincoln Electric Group paid out of workforce Georgia Grant for $24,207 for a plasma table for Winderberry High School. The next one is O D P Business Solutions paid out of the L four G A Grant for $20,454 for 42 bookshelves at Bear Creek Middle School. University of Georgia paid out of the general fund for $17,424 and that was for our senior tax exemption study. The next one is Imagine Learning LLC for Title III A Funds, $18,421 for 153 Imagine Learning and Literacy Licenses. And that's for elementary and middle schools. And the last one is for Verizon paid out of the general fund for $11,305 for 23 cell phones and cases for maintenance employees. And that's for the maintenance department. Any questions? Alright, Guy Rogers, our tack professor was supposed to be here tonight, but he just sent me with his report and it says the net digest increased approximately 25%, about 9% for real growth and the rest is inflationary growth.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. We'll digest that later. Alright, next we have system operations report, Mr. Parnas.
Good evening. Looking at some pictures of our projects, Austin Road Elementary School. Doing really well there. Primarily right now working on the site, getting topsoil spread around and and getting grassing going. We've got finishes nearly complete inside. You can't see the floor, it's covered. It's there. It's all there except the carpet. We're gonna put that in at the very end. But had some groups come through the building, Teacher of the Year were there last Friday. Several members of executive cabinet there. Any board members who'd like to go through, anybody who would like to let us know, we'll we'll walk you through. Looking good.
Looking good. Really good.
Okay, Bassett two, we're going vertical with Bassett two. So we've got steel going up. And we've got stuff everywhere out there, steel, metal decking, storm pipe. I mean, it's it's on at Bassett two. So we're excited about that. And last but certainly not least, Cow Barn. Highway 81. I'm excited about Cow Barn.
Joe's favorite project.
Yeah. I love this thing and we're gonna, we're gonna get the other buildings out there, what we call reskinned, same thing. Just just get a new roof and new walls and get them prettied up and cleaned up. Lipstick on a pig. No pun intended there, but so Highway 81 Farm has come along very well. We're excited about that.
What was it? You used to call it, it's about the pig parlor.
Yes. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, teaching and learning, Dr. Mooten.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to share information about the B C S S Parent Resource Page. And Mrs. Royal and Dr. Jones will join me momentarily. As part of the ongoing effort to strengthen communications with families in our district or those who may be thinking about moving into the Barrow County School District. The Teaching and Learning Department is in the process of developing a parent information section on the district webpage. This page will highlight what to expect at certain grade levels and in certain courses, and we hope that it will be helpful information for our students and for our parents and the public in general. Eventually, parents will have access to information on each course offered and each grade level. But we've chosen to begin with mathematics first, so everything is not going to be there. We'll phase another subject, but beginning with mathematics. We chose to begin with math first because Georgia has changed the standards and those standards take effect next year, the 2023-24 school year. Likewise, mathematics and the math sequencing has historically been one of the most or more misunderstood academic areas in K-12 education, and we realize that. So each information sheet will include basic information about the course and the grade level, including how to access standards and the pacing guides. It will also include links to resources to help students if they need additional assistance. And there will be basic tips for parents on how to set up their students for success. So we do hope that these parent resource pages at the elementary and secondary levels will be helpful to students, parents, and the public at large. So at this time, I'm going to call Mrs. Tanya Royal to explain and share a draft of the elementary and then following Mrs. Royal will be our secondary director, Dr. Peter Jones.
Good evening. Rochelle, you've got it pulled up. Thank you. You can see the example of the first grade mathematics, parent resource guide that I've developed. It talks about why the standards are important. It talks about, or and then it lists the first grade standards, and these are the new math standards that we'll be moving forward with. And then it gives some suggestions of how you can help your student in the area of mathematics. And then some resources over on the side that parents can use with those with their student at home. We are working with Shinley as well to develop all of this and get it on our webpage, so that parents will have one place that they can go to and get all of those resources. So this is kind of the starting of a mountain, because there's lots we can put out there for parents with resources and those kinds of things, but we want it in one location so that they will feel comfortable and know where to go to get that.
Very nice.
Evening. And for continuity's sake, we can see we're keeping the same template, so as students advance through our system, they will see it in the same format. I didn't want to highlight a couple of pieces to the, this is a high school course, there will be middle school as well, but the high school pages will talk about whether this course is mandatory or not at the top, and then you will see there's some links there to the actual curriculum pieces. If you could, if you can click on the link there that says B C S S Algebra Concepts Curriculum. Oh. We go, that second link in that section there, the curriculum map part. So you can kind of take a look and see you know, the parents will have access to, you know, kind of the scope and sequence of what's going on in the course. Students can always access this as well, so if they're looking for what's ahead or what's not ahead, they can tell there. You can click back now and go back to the normal page. There's also going to be some links here that parents can kind of preview our curriculum, if you will, as you are well aware, our district is growing. And so as parents start evaluating where to move, alright, they can kind of take a look at what we offer. And so you'll see a link to open up resources. Alright, that would take you directly to the site where they can look at the curriculum. They can actually, you know, actually look at a lot of the lessons and things like that, should they choose. And then on the right side, much like the elementary page, there's going to be some resources. If you can click on that link at the bottom of that, there you go. So you can kind of see what this is linking to. So if a parent wants to help their child, but they might not know how, because as you are probably aware, math has become a lot different than it used to be. And so this actually is linked to a full course. So if you were having trouble in a particular area, you could go in, watch some information videos, there's quizzes in there. So this is a supplementary resource, and oftentimes we get questions from parents about how can I help my child? Alright, well, we want to start giving them some resources to do this. And so again, this is just the beginning. I mean, obviously, we would, you know, continue to build this out, but just want to kind of show you a sample. We would have one of these pages for each course, including electives, and so students could take a look at, you know, do I really want to take topics? Right? Would I rather take statistics? And so we're excited about this project. We're looking forward to rolling it out this fall. Again, this is all still in draft form, but if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Very cool.
This is on the website. It's easy to find.
It will be. Again, we're our aim is to have this launched before next school year, so probably during the summer it'll go live. Right now, we're still in the process of making sure that it's easily accessible. And that's why Ms. Royal mentioned we're going to be working with Shannon a little bit to figure out what is the best way to do that. So you know, when they land on our page, it's obvious where they can go. So that's kind of the plan. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Looking good.
Alright, now we have Ms. Williams and Ms. Walker with Arts Now.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. It's great to be back with you. As many of you saw at the last board meeting, we were able to present some awards to our teachers that had graduated out of the residency program, as well as to Dr. McMichael for being a district-wide partner. And what I realized, Sean realized over time, is that I haven't met many of the new board members and haven't really had an opportunity to talk about the partnership with you. Because, you know, we had that COVID blip and then I had some health issues. And so because of the health issues, I haven't really been in the saddle. So it's good to be back yet to speak with you all a little bit about, you know, why Arts Now and why arts integration in Barrow County Schools. Yeah. I don't have very much. Thank you. Um, so first of all, some of you may just kind of think, you know, why is this important to especially to students in Barrow County Schools? You know, we have a lot of research that talks about increased student engagement, improving test scores, supporting teacher improvement as well, which is really, really important, teacher advocacy. And also during this timeframe, retaining teachers and just improving classroom and school culture, bringing joy back into the classroom and into that school culture. And then you can see in your slide deck too, that after Arts Now, we're really finding that teachers really have changed their practices, that they're using the arts in their class more, that they're really seeing that they can differentiate instruction to meet the needs of diverse learning styles. And then also they're using those creative and critical thinking skills, which is really, really important. So for those of you that don't know, we're going to try to fly through pretty fast a little bit about a timeline. We really started a partnership with Barrow County Schools in 2008. We came in and worked specifically with Sean at Auburn Elementary. Some of you remember that, and we really saw great success in the elementary instruction. And Auburn actually became what we called a leadership school at that time. We worked there with 40 teachers, 500 students, continued that partnership. Then in the years to follow that, we worked with some other elementary schools and we worked with a grant called Direct to Discovery. And that was really providing resources to kids and videos to teachers. And then I would say in about 2015, Dr. McMichael kind of said, well, how would this translate into middle school practices? And then I'll have to say Jennifer Wood got involved and she kind of took a chance on us and said, well, I think there's a great translation, because we know that those middle school kids are sometimes the ones that are a little bit less engaged. So we started a pilot at Bear Creek Middle School, did that for a year, it went really well, so we kind of expanded that into Russell. And then after we impacted those teachers and we saw that it could work, that's when Dr. McMichael and I kind of put our heads back together and said, what could this become more district-wide? In that spring, Arts Now actually moved in and created a regional office at the Center for Innovative Teaching. So when you go there and kind of see some of our folks in and out, that was one of the things that we did to really establish this district-wide partnership that we really wanted to be here to support and partner with the district. And then in 2017, that's when we launched this district-wide partnership, established that regional hub, and started what we call this Arts Now Residency Program that's happening at C-FIT. We really again wanted teachers from across the district to be able to come and experience this with their students. So in the first year, we had 28 teachers from across the entire district, fourth through eighth grades. And then, of course, we continued that. And then again, we like to modify and change things to make it better. So in 2018, we thought, what if this were a pilot program? And that was kind of the initial stage for the Arts and Innovation Magnet Program, which is AIM currently. So that was kind of an initial pilot program. Back in 2018, only four teachers and 96 students, and I'm sure Mr. Holman can tell you now that it's grown tremendously and there's a waiting list, and so great success there. 2019, of course, the residency continued. 2020, we continued but had to modify, of course, because of COVID, some things pivoted to online. But we were really able to continue serving those teachers and students through some virtual but engaging opportunities. 2021, we kind of returned in person to everything. We were recognized, some of you may remember, as a partnership recognized by the School Boards Association for Innovation. I know some of you were able to be there. And also that was a time that Arts Now always looks for opportunities to serve schools in a deeper way. And we wrote a U S Department of Education grant in which we're recognized kind of as a national nonprofit, and we were able to, again, with Dr. McMichael's help, identify a couple of schools. And those are Winder Elementary and Statham Elementary. And we wrote a STEAM grant for them. And so right now, we're able to serve them, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, really focusing on those STEAM practices. So that was really Fast and Furious, but that's our history. It brings us to 2022-23. The residency program is continuing. We have now served every school, teachers from every school in elementary and middle schools, so representation. The goal is that they're going to take those practices back to their school and impact other teachers and students, so that the impact truly becomes exponential. We also wanted to reach students beyond the school day and have extended learning opportunities. So we started designing and providing after-school experiences and summer experiences. Sean's been very instrumental in writing some Georgia Council for the Arts Grants, so again, we can serve students during the day. Arts Now also offers, just to make sure everyone knows, we offer teachers a mini-grant, so that if they want to do things with more students or in a different way, they can apply and we can give them funds to cover some of their arts integration materials that they might need for their classroom. And then today, it's pretty exciting to say that we've served and really worked with almost 5,000 students from across the district and continue to be excited about this kind of partnership. So what are the opportunities? You've heard a lot about them. You know, I talked about residency, our grants that we're continually writing, resources that we're trying to provide to teachers in Barrow and beyond. And then last but not least, I know Dr. McMichael alluded to this last time at the board meeting. We're offering these demonstration of learning days, and I'm sure you have the dates, but would love to invite you to come and see arts integration in action at the AIM program, but also with the Arts Now Residency at C-FIT. We've had guests from many different states really come to observe these practices and really highlight and showcase Barrow County as being Barrow gold and really doing things differently. So we are so proud to be a and then again, I'm not going to let Sean come up and say, you know, what does it matter? Um, so tell them a little bit about the residency and the impact of the disaster, absolutely. So Pam alluded to the residency and its history. What teachers do is they sign up for a three-year commitment. They come over to C-FIT for four weeks and one day a week for four weeks. They bring their students with them. And in the classrooms at C-FIT, they're able to have job embedded professional learning, as well as having the students there with them, so the students have the experiences with our Arts Now Consultants. Each, it's a gradual release program, so the first year, the consultant is taking ownership of the classroom instruction, making those connections between the fine art form and the content area that they're studying. They start a week before the first visit with a planning session, so that they make sure that their teaching is relevant to what the students are learning at the time. And then they finish up on week six, they have a debrief session, so they can talk about what did they learn, not only from the student standpoint, but a teacher's standpoint, how we can extend, extend those learning opportunities back in the classroom when they go back to their schools. We do that twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. And it's, it's job embedded, and so it is on-the-ground learning. There's no loss of instruction. We're not pulling the teachers out of the classroom for these learning opportunities. They're learning right alongside their students. And so if the next slide will tell you our current schools this year, you can see those there, previous schools, as Pam mentioned, we've had the opportunity to work with teachers from every elementary and middle school. And then we're excited, we have several new residency teachers coming in. We've had several graduate out. We recognized them at the last meeting. But we have a county line at Auburn coming back in, Holson Bad Kennedy. And we already have some teachers from the AIM program, County Line in Nargo. So we're really excited to have schools, different schools come back into the residency. And as Pam said, but what does it matter? We can tell you stories about how wonderful it is, and you can read the teacher and student reflections. But at the end of the day, there are some people that are very interested in that growth data. And one of the things that I've always loved about Dr. McMichael as an administrator is he wanted to see beyond the test scores, because children are much, much more than the test score. But we looked at, we really studied the teachers that have graduated out of the residency, and as I mentioned at the last board meeting, 24 have remained in Barrow County, and we've spoken to them, we've talked with administrators, we've done some surveys about how many times are you using arts integration? So we dug into the data and looked at the teachers that we know based on their reporting and what we observed, the consistent teaching through this way. And here is the data there. So this is from math, this is the growth from fall to winter. The average growth, you can see there on the right for Barrow County. And then the teacher leaders that we have consistently seen using the strategies, you can see their growth scores. And so not only does it make those classrooms more engaging, the students are performing very well. So we just want to share that actual data, because we know that's important. So the last thing that we'll say is, I'm not going to take time to share this, but there's a video that some of you may have seen, and if not, we encourage you to kind of take a look at that. There's an annual report in front of you, board members, and there's a QR code that you could kind of click on to see the feature that we highlighted Barrow County School Partnership. So it's great to be back in front of you guys, and I want to thank you so much for this very meaningful and rewarding partnership that you've afforded us to have. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Fantastic partnership.
One of the best times.
Absolutely.
Alright, planning personnel, Ms. Banks? Okay, strategic projects, Dr. Thompson? Alright, then we have a name change for the Barrow County Alternative Education Programs to the Horizon Program.
That will be me. I just wanted to let y'all, and the item of information doesn't, since it's not a facility, it doesn't follow under our policies for facility naming, but Dr. Welch and the staffs over at the Alternative School have come forth, had asked us to look at changing the name of the program and cabinet and we got together and looked over, and we think it's a great idea. And the name they've come up with is the Horizon Program. Some of the notes are, we continue to approve our program and offer additional options for our growing and impressionable population. We believe Horizon will be an appropriate name for several reasons. The big two were program focus, which is their program focus is really to change the lives and decision-making of the students that come to them, so they can see better things on the horizon and in their future, and then even, and also public perception. The name alternative does have a negative connotation in many ways, and so we don't want to keep that negative stigma, because we know that so much good work goes on over there. It's not, for the greatest of reasons, that students wind up over there, but we've talked about before, it's amazing how many students and their parents want to stay at the Alternative program. Once they're there, it provides them with something that you know, smaller class sizes, for more individualized attention, focus that they need, those type of things. So with that, it seems like a good time to do that with the way things are growing and changing here in the county. Let me see if y'all had any questions or discussion on that.
Comments?
We'll proceed with some rebranding then. We love to do that here in Barrow too, so. So we will get on a new logo and new information. Bring that to y'all down the road when we get it done. So thank you.
Sounds good. Alright, we're going to hop down to new business. We'll start off with Dr. Darby and the school year 23-24 Shooting Code of Conduct.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Here are no recommendations or suggestions for change. The superintendent would like to recommend removal from public review, the S Y 24 Barrow County School System Code of Conduct, and move to approve said code of conduct.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alrighty, next we've got Mr. St. Player with teacher laptop. Can I stand in the guest?
Thank you. As part of our recurring yearly efforts to refresh end-of-life technology, teacher desktops are slated to be replaced with new laptops. Additionally, laptops are, for teachers are required for the new elementary school. And an RFP was posted and 29 vendors responded. The low bid responded, H P I International of Brooklyn, New York, has done similar business with us before. And they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. 442 laptops are being purchased across multiple schools as shown there. We are also requesting authorization to use this RFP response for any additional laptop purchases through the end of this fiscal year, up to a maximum of an additional 100 laptops. So financial impact would be $338,129.28 now from Esser Funds for 442 laptops, and then up to an additional $89,928 for various funds, depending on who asks for laptops, for an additional 100 laptops through June 30th, 2023. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of teacher laptops from low bid respondent H P I International in the amount of $338,129.28 for 442 laptops, and to further authorize the use of this RFP response to purchase up to another 100 laptops for maximum additional amount of $89,928 through June 30th, 2023.
Alright, any questions? And you need us to vote on this one tonight?
If so, if you're willing, yes, please. The, the end of year competition, as everyone uses the blast of our funds, means that the sooner we get aligned, the better we are.
Alright, we'll vote on that one later.
Thank you. As part of our efforts to improve school safety, both replacement and new security cameras are being installed for multiple schools. An RFP was posted and 13 vendors responded. The low bid responded. Pearl Mutter Purchasing Power of San Diego, California, met the terms of the RFP. They have an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. We're looking for 137 cameras broken out at the following locations as shown. And this is done in consultation with the district safety officer, John Skinner, for prioritization of our longer list of where we need to put cameras. And as a matter of note, for clarity, this is for purchase of the cameras only. Subsequent installation costs will also be incurred. The financial impact for the camera purchases is $39,038.40 from I T S funds. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Panasonic security cameras. Low bid responded, Pearl Mutter Purchasing Power of San Diego, California, in the amount of $39,038.40. low bid responded Pearl Mutter Purchasing Power of San Diego, California in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, have we ever done, we've never done business with these people.
No, which is why I looked up their better business bureau rating um and carefully researched them with SAM.gov. No, I I'd never heard of them before, but I looked them up. They're a fairly big company in that part of the of the country.
Okay, I'm I'm just concerned about the bid when we've got people from Georgia who obviously wouldn't have the same kind of transportation cost and that sort of thing to mail these or do whatever they do with them. Uh, that came in more. I I always wonder when there's that much difference in the pricing between them.
Yes, ma'am. Part of part of our, I I do as well, and we've had issues with, you know, gray market in the past as well. Part of our um bids now require that we get certification that they are authorized to sell the product. Um, and then when we get the product, where a new vendor like this, it's such a lower bid, we will verify the serial numbers with the company to verify that these are legitimate products that we get warranty service on on.
Okay, so you're comfortable with this?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Will be additional cameras put um, put cameras at both high schools in their gymnasiums in the P E area?
Yes.
It will.
Yes, it will.
Yes. Yes.
The cost, obviously, it's just, they gotta be installed. Are our people gonna do that?
Uh, we will either have tech optics student who currently has our contract for miscellaneous work at a, you know, a fixed rate. Um, or if we end up not getting these done until past the end of the fiscal year, we'll have another bid out for a vendor to do that.
So they have the same amount of warranty as all these others that have a high price?
Yes, ma'am. These are all manufactured. Yes, so the 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 reseller is is really only the purchasing mechanism. Once we get the cameras, we'll never deal with them again. Unless there's another bid.
All right, consent agenda. Thank you, sir. All righty, next we have Dr. Moten with Instructional Conversation Summer Institute.
Well, thank you. We have eleven schools that will collectively send up to forty-seven teachers to the Instructional Conversation Foundational Institute. Instructional Conversation is a research-based model for collaborative conversation-based, culturally responsive, small group instruction that is ideal for teachers concerned with how to meet the needs of culturally and linguistically diverse learners. When students participate in instructional conversation, they engage in collaborative discussion focused on a problem or completing a learning task. This professional learning opportunity supports the B C S S Strategic Plan goal of creating a robust developmentally appropriate simplified curriculum that is accessible to teachers, students, parents, and families. Through the action step, following that, through the action step of challenging student use of critical thinking and problem solving through the implementation and innovative programming and instructional strategies. The financial impact of the Instructional Conversation Institute will be thirty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars from a combination of L four G eight, Title III, and school consolidated funds. Based on this information, the superintendent recommends authorizing the payment of up to twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars in June of twenty twenty-three and up to twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars in July of twenty twenty-three to the University of Georgia for registration fees for uh pre-K through the grade twelve teachers from eleven schools, and that is eight elementary schools, one middle school, and two high schools that you see listed there. And this will be for a multi-day Instructional Conversation Institute facilitated by the Center for Latino Achievement and Success in Education.
Any questions?
I have a question because it's talked about multi um, what's the phrase, say, um, multi they're culturally and linguistically diverse ones. Yeah, this is being facilitated by the Center for Latino Achievement and Success in Education. Is this for, and how many languages do we have spoken here? And is this gonna work? Is this designed primarily for all diverse groups?
This is for all students.
All students, yes. Okay, not just.
Right, yeah. We've been actually, we've been working with that class A for probably since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen with this. Um, so we're just at a point where we can send more. It's it's a really great um technique for engaging the students and the actual talking about the learning and and but yeah, it's set up for all students.
Students hold structurally rich conversations with each other. It really is something.
Really need to watch her get going.
Consent agenda. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, next, Mr. Perna will talk about the Primero Staffing Contract Provision.
Okay, Primero Staffing has been supplying custodial labor force since two thousand sixteen. And it's necessary for us to make several amendments from the contract with them. And so we're asking uh the superintendent to recommend amending the contract between Barrow County Schools and Primero Staffing with changes as noted in the attached agreement. And um Rochelle, if you wouldn't mind to pull that up, and while you do, um I'll just read here, it's necessary to amend our contract with Primero Staffing to allow for negotiation of rates and issuance of any bonus payments. As you know, the job market pay rates have been very fluid over the last several years. And um so we've we've got to be able to sort of capture that and and be able to deal with that uh through an amendment in this contract. Uh, revision is also necessary uh to clean up a couple of things we've got in there with background checks and fingerprint screening. Um, so we can clearly establish who's responsible for that. Uh, Dan Murphy and system staff have reviewed and approved of these proposed edits. And we'll just take a moment to go through those. So on page one, the highlighted portion there says that Primero will conduct name-based background checks only. Um, in the current contract, it says that they're supposed to form the FBI fingerprint criminal background checks. That's not really their responsibility. That's ours, like we do for all Barrow employees. So we're just separating that, saying Primero, you conduct the name-based background check. That's a, it's more of a narrow net there, a smaller net. Um, kind of an initial, an initial screening. And then on page two, on the top of page three, um, that puts the FBI fingerprint background checks in Barrow County Schools Court. So that's the way we've been doing it, and we're just getting the words to reflect that now uh in effect. Um, that middle highlighted area there, page three, this deals with the pay. And what we're saying there is the basis for any rate change, retention supplement, bonus or price increase or decrease is something that we're going to negotiate between Barrow County Schools and Primero before any type of approval. And then the last change on page four, uh, this is something that we implemented during COVID. Uh, it's called temporary hiring procedure for fast hire. So if we have more than ten vacancies, which, you know, fortunately, right now, we don't. But a couple of years ago, we would have seventeen, eighteen, twenty uh at any given moment. And if we were sending someone to see fit to see John Skinner for the background screening, he might have had a long list in line of people. And so we didn't want to lose an applicant because they had to wait. Um, so we put a a fast hire process in place here. And that gives Primero the opportunity to do their name-based screening, bring someone on board for a period of two days just to get them here. They can go to work in a building without children in it. So it could be the P D C, it could be maintenance, transportation. Uh, they can perform a special project just to get them on board so we don't lose them. Um, and again, this is just putting that in the contract now um and part of this amendment to uh just just kind of cast that in stone, if you will.
How long does it normally take to get the background checks that we do the information back?
Very quick.
Very quick.
Very quick. I mean, this is not this, this is not the sort of thing that we're doing very often at all. It it's, you know, then during COVID, it was more prevalent. Um, but right now, you know, it's it's very seldom used, but we like to have it. You know, if we get to that point, we need to get someone over there, but you know, John's got a line. Um, we understand we need to wait in line. We just don't want to lose those people. It gives us a chance to kind of hang on a minute while John clears that queue out, and then we get him over there. But it's it's quick once he sees them. Quick turnaround.
Don't we need that on that other, that paragraph where we say we temporarily hire them? Um, back up that 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 one, that paragraph, don't we need to say somewhere, I mean, I know you're telling us that we put them in a building where there's no kids until it's done. But God forbid, something happens to you or something happens to us, and next people that come along, doesn't it need to be spelled out that says that in there? That they will not be in a building with students? And this is to spell it out somewhere for the next people?
Yes, ma'am. It's in the, you know, I think we may have that one on there too, the contract addendum, temporary hiring procedure. Sorry, Ms. Kelly, you're you're right to bring that up. So this document here, which becomes an an addendum to this contract, it spells that out. It says exactly what Primero is to do.
But just we put it there also, so if somebody, you know how people don't like to read everything? It's in that part also, right under there. If they go back and they point to that particular page and that phrase, it's spelled out under there as well.
We can. I mean, it, the way it reads now, the parties further agree that temporary hiring procedure for fast hire agreed upon in twenty twenty-one remains in effect and is incorporated into this agreement, the copy of which is attached here too.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's telling you, hey, you need to go see the end of this document.
Okay.
To find that language.
Right. Or we just put it under that paragraph, see it in them, something that points them back.
Yes, ma'am.
So they can't just pull it out. Nevermind. Just to keep us covered.
We'll do it.
All righty, consent agenda.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got Dr. Thompson with School Site Pro for enrollment planning.
Good evening. One of the uh largest challenges when you're a school district in an ever-growing community is the needing the ability to make accurate projections of how new development and new growth are going to affect enrollment or enrollment boundaries. Um, that is a critical part of being able to manage that growth, which is part of our strategic plan and part of our charter plan. Um, so for many, many years in Barrow County, Miss Cindy Beggs has very ably um led that. And the software we have used has been Versatrans, which was essentially our transportation routing software, but also contained um the ability to make projections um of enrollment based on new uh development and also redraw boundaries to see how enrollment would be affected. During this school year, we transitions to an upgraded version of Versatrans called Student Transportation, which is great for transportation because it's better, but it lost much of the key functionality that we were using in uh planning and projection. So as a result, we needed a replacement. And as this is a pretty um specific piece of software that um there's not a lot of out there that attempt to do this. It's not something we could simply bid out. So what Ms. Beggs and I did was we did a canvassing survey of all of the districts in Georgia of a certain size that were experiencing high levels of growth to try to find out what they were using for these purposes. And what we found was it ran the gamut from everything, from some of them were doing homegrown work with spreadsheets all the way up to people who uh employed professional demographers and um expert users of planning software that kind of built their own models. What we did find was two out of um straight out of the box um pieces of software that were worthy of consideration. One of them was uh Esri Arc G I S for school administration from the Esri Corporation. And the other was School Site Pro from Davis Demographics. We wanted to make sure that each of these pieces of software could enable us to make uh formula-based projections based on new growth and development, birth rates, historical trends, all those things, as well as redraw our boundaries to see the impact um they would have on future enrollment. Um, as we had initial conversations with them, it became obvious that um Esri Arc G I S for school administration did not have all of the functionality we required. Um, whereas Davis uh demographics, School Site Pro did. Ms. Beggs and I sat down and did a demo uh demo with them and were duly impressed and saw that they had all of the things we needed. And this would be a rather significant upgrade over what we currently have. So after some conversation and pricing, we bring to you tonight the superintendent's recommendation that we purchase School Site Pro software training and setup services in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars for year one development, license, licensing and setup costs and sixty-five hundred dollars in recurring annual costs for licensing and support to Davis Demographics. Um, to kind of break that price down a little bit more, what this actually includes, the annual cost of the system will be for one user license that's concurrent, which means multiple people can use it. They just can't be in the system at the same time. But what that would be, it'd be is sixty-five hundred, subject to inflation and uh price changing over the years to use the software, a five thousand dollar one-time fee to have their trainer come in, fly in here and train individuals on how to use the software, and then seventeen thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars in one-time setup fees. Essentially, for them to come in, take our geocoded data, set all of our students up in the software, have everything nice and specific so that once we actually are trained, we can start using this correctly and immediately. Um, they have done business with many districts in this state. They came highly recommended from Cherokee County as a specific example. Um, I have been waiting many, many years to say what I'm about to say, but they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. And um additionally, we have included this in our uh proposed general budget for S Y twenty-four. So I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is there a limit on how much they can increase their pricing every year?
I mean, that's any software we have is subject to that. So there's nothing in the contract that would preclude that, but I have not really seen that in any other software contracts.
All right, any other questions? Consent agenda. All right, thank you, sir.
Very much.
Ms. Houston, we're gonna get rid of some mobile trailers.
All right, um, we have identified two trailers. Um, one's thirty-three years old, one's thirty-seven years old. And we would like um to declare these as surplus trailers. And then once the board approves them as surplus, one of the trailers will be donated to the barifier department, and the other will be listed for sale on an auction site. If it's not sold on the auction site, then we'll take it to a scrapyard or scrapyard will come and get it, and the proceeds will be coded to the general fund. And there's pictures of the trailers if you want to see them, but it's it's a nineteen ninety-one and a nineteen eighty-six one.
All right, any questions? Consent agenda. All right.
So this is, this is before we called on learning coaches.
Where did they come from?
Kennedy, both the Kennedy. All right, the next item is um the media book bid for um Austin Road Elementary School. So uh we ask for a request for proposal uh seeking startup media collection consisting of both print and electronic materials as well as processing and cataloging of materials, shipping and shelving of materials by the vendor. Two proposals were received, one from Children's Plus, the other from Follett. Um, the proposal selection was based on price, references, quality of material, and customer service. We base this original bid on nine hundred students, um the district. And the school staff will curate the final list. So we are, the superintendent recommends purchasing a startup media collection for Austin Road Elementary School from Children's Plus in the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
So to echo what you just said is we're approving you to spend the money, we're not picking the book shit.
Correct.
We'll pick the books later.
Media clerk along with um assistant staff will collect, will select the books.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment. If we, if it's normal procedure for us to have the like the media specialist and the staff to choose the books, I think it would be a good idea if we ask some folks from the uh governance team or some parents to be part of that. Because we need to have my own parents about this.
So could we get a few future?
Yeah.
Austin Road parents and community members involved.
If they already have a few people on the F G two. Makes sense, what they're, part of what they're, should be there for us.
All right, any other questions? Consent agenda.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
This one voted tonight.
Yeah, we'll vote on this one tonight. So you guys can go ahead.
Yes, please.
And get it, get it going.
All right, um, the next item is the twenty twenty-four budget. I am gonna go through it, but not as in detail as we did the other night. Just um we want the public to see it, the uh principals and the directors to look at it too. So we'll pop up that uh PowerPoint. All right. PowerPoint, alright. So as always, uh, we, all of our decisions are focused on our vision and mission. We also make sure our decisions align with our strategic plan goals. For twenty twenty-four, our major budget guidelines and goals were to sustain and improve a quality basic education for all students. Address additional academic support needs caused by the challenges of the pandemic. Provide teachers and act with access to equitable resources and training to ensure quality education experiences and improve academic achievement for all students. Support special education students through the provisions and supervise supervision of a variety of strong special education programs intended to improve quality instruction in the least restrictive environment. Continue our focus on the enhancement of safety and security across the district. Continue to provide social and emotional support opportunities for our students and staff. Invest in our people by continuing to make Barrow County School System competitive with neighboring school systems and other job sectors. Elevating the teacher's profession by continuing to build on our recruitment and induction programs. And provide a strong teacher mentoring program. And then finally, identify and support future educators through the innovative Grow Our Own program. Our process is we start at zero-based budgeting. We don't just add a percentage to our budget. Uh, we review the staffing allotments with all departments and schools, submission of budgets from all departments, review of budgets by business services, review by executive cabinet. And then finally present to the board for approval. A general fund snapshot today is um, the FTE in March was fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four students. Nine elementary schools, four middle, three high schools, SIM, C-FIT, alternative school, our teachers, about one thousand three hundred and two. And we have a hundred and eighty-two bus drivers and monitors. And then here's our state level comparison for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. We're twenty-fourth out of a hundred and eighty districts in size. Hundred and forty-ninth out of a hundred and eighty in expenditures, hundred and nineteenth out of a hundred and eighty in revenue received per FTE. We have, we basically have two major sources of income. That's local and state. Local's about thirty-eight percent and it consists basically of taxes. Our state income is basically um, the quality basic education formula and some grants. Our revenue assumptions for this year's, our property tax digest will increase by eight percent compared to the prior year. Our mileage rate will remain remain at seventeen point eight eight, but of course, we're going to talk about that next month. Our QBE funding increases to seventeen million dollars, which is a lot over the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. But it includes two state mandates, one, the certified health insurance increase of seven point three million dollars. And includes a two thousand dollars certified salary increase of two point three million. Uh, there will be no austerity reduction for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, so they're not going to reduce that state amount that we get. The TAVT tax increase of five hundred thousand, so we anticipate gaining six million dollars in TAVT tax. We're going to anticipate a five hundred thousand dollars to our midterm QBE. Our interest rates are going up. So our overall budget revenues look like this, a hundred and eighty-one million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. And that's a twenty-one point nine million dollar increase. For our, our expenditures, we'll go over our state required benefits first. For teacher retirement system, uh, they held the rate at nineteen point nine eight for the employer side. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the general fund total cast uh, cost of the TRS system is twenty point three million. Our health insurance increase for twenty twenty-four, the employer share of certified health insurance increased five hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. Per uh, certified staff, so that's a sixty-two percent increase. And then the employer share of classified health insurance will increase two hundred and fifty dollars per month in January. So that's a six-month increase, twenty-six percent increase for six months. So the total cost is twenty-six point four million dollars just for health insurance in the general fund. Total year, uh, total health insurance in TRS is forty-six point seven million dollars. Um, in the general fund. And then uh, the last mandate that we talk about is our personally three-week leave for um. Employees who have children or they adopt children and that costs about two hundred and fifty thousand per year. Our investment in faculty and staff, um, we have an annual local system step increase that will cost about one point five million dollars. For eligible certified staff. A two thousand dollar increase in the state salary schedule for teachers, that totals about three point two million. A three percent increase for classified staff in our salary table to about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. And an increase in our local supplement for certified staff, which costs about two point nine million dollars, uh, that's including benefits. We also will be opening Austin Road Elementary School. We're going to add sixty-six positions, that's teachers and staff to that school. It will have um, enforcement instructional supplies, classroom books, units of study, level readers, janitorial staff, utilities, cup beers, et cetera. And that looks to be about six point five million dollars per year. Additional investment in instruction, uh, three teachers and three pairs for the GNET students. Uh, half of this will be reimbursed by the City of Jefferson, one speech language therapist, reading and writing materials, textbook for growth and replacement. Math manipulatives, middle and high school science and math supplies, open up geometry and algebra curriculum. Formative online assessments and K-five math curriculum. For our academic support, each middle school will gain a half of an assistant principal. Each high school will gain either a half or one assistant principal. Our grade six through twelve science content specialists will hire a grade six through twelve science content specialist. Hire a grade six through twelve social study content specialist. Hire a six through twelve literacy content specialist. And then we're going to provide stipends for teacher mentors and um, grow our own program support. For our investment in student health and safety, we're going to hire two counselors. Of course, one is going to be at um, Austin Road Elementary School. One social worker, one nurse, half of an athletic trainer, which will get us to three. One school resource sergeant, um, which will give us a total of thirteen SROs and three sergeants. An additional counselor training, registered behavior technician training, security camera monitoring station for our chief safety and security officer. And my EOP, which is an application for emergency preparedness. For our investment in operations, an IT network administrator, maintenance will have significant escalation escalation in labor, materials, fuel and energy cost. Will hire, and we have hired an HR generalist, maintenance level three position, a transportation mechanic. Financial software upgrade and training for business services, content generation specialist, planning software. And increase in insurance cost and contracts with outside organizations. So our overall budgeted expenditures look like this, hundred and eighty-six million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-three for an increase. Twenty-six million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Eighty-eight point three percent of our expenditures is salaries and benefits. So our significant differences, since it's such a huge increase, um, our teacher raises is going to cost about three point two, as I said before. Our local supplement increase, two point nine, three percent for classified is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Our state help increase eight point six million and the opening of Austin Road Elementary School, six point five. So that's about twenty-one million of that amount, twenty-two million. This is how the money is spent. Um, our instructional salaries and benefits is seventy-four point two percent. Our administrative salaries and benefits, six point six percent. Our classified salary and benefits, seven point five percent. Our instructional operations, so nothing, everything other than salaries and benefits, three point three million, three point three percent. Administrative operations, point five percent and classified operations, seven point eight percent. This is just a visual of when I, what I've just went over, our um, classified compensation and operations, fifteen point three percent. Administrative compensation and operations, seven percent. And then, of course, we'd love to see this amount, the instructional compensation and operation, seventy-seven point five nine percent. So that's really what we're spending in the classroom. This is our expenditure breakdown, as I said before, what is salaries and benefits, eighty-eight point three, which doesn't leave much for other things. Like, you know, electricity and gas. Uh, we are going to move some of our funds over to S R funds. Um, that will be mainly our teaching and learning materials. We feel comfortable being able to pay for those out of S R funds. That will reduce our expenditures to a hundred and eighty-five point seven million. Um, S R will also be purchasing a learning management system that we haven't gone over and a social emotional learning curriculum for students and staff. So this is what our tentative general fund budget looks like, a hundred and eighty-one point nine million dollars in revenues, a hundred and eighty-five point seven million dollars in expenditures. So we'll have to use some of our fund balance of three point eight million. And we believe our projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four will still be uh, very good at fifty-eight point two million dollars. We also talked about some things that we wanted to consider um, outside of what uh, cabinet had talked about. So uh, we talked about an eighty thousand dollar audit services by a public CPA firm and you guys agreed to that, thank you. Um, we talked about a twenty-five thousand per year for three years requested by the tax assessor for position discover items not yet on the tax digest. And we decided to put that on hold, not to do that. Um, we talked about additional help in elementary school and uh, we will address this with existing staff. We have a plan in place for that. Uh, that Dr. Moten is going to implement. Um, security cameras and stairwells and gyms, just like we said before, that's currently in the plans. Um, we're limited to the availability of equipment and contractors to install, but um, that plan is there and we're moving forward with it. A mentor coordinator coordinator, um, this position was already in the budget. Um, we're just going to tweak it a little bit and make it more of a mentor coordinator than some of the other things that was on this person. Uh, security staff and we will address that in safety um, committees in the future. So now with the um, added eighty thousand dollars for audit services. Uh, it looks like our ending fund balance will be fifty-eight point one million dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So uh, we will vote on the tentative budget next week, May second. We will, uh, I'll present to you at the work session at the end of May, uh, all other funds. That includes our capital projects funds and all of our federal funds. And then um, public hearing on the budget will be six PM on June thirteenth. We'll have another public hearing on the budget at eleven AM on June twentieth. And the vote on the approval of the final budgets will be to be announced depending on when we get our tax digest from the um, tax commissioner's office. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Already consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, the next item is the, are the twenty twenty-three legislative positions and the delegate selection? We should have all received an email from Angela Paul with this year's um, legislative position. Does anybody have any? Thing they want to send back to them, any tweaks? Okay, and then the delegate selection for the summer uh, school board conference. And is it one, what are you, first and second?
We're, we're going to be, yeah, we're all, we, we'll be there, like a night.
Who's there in person?
Hey, I'll be there.
Are you going to?
Looks like it's the two, the two rookie.
We have a delegate.
I love it. Who wants to be the delegate, who wants to be the alternate? The delegate actually sits in the meeting, the, the delegate can't.
And votes on it.
You voted.
And like, I don't have to be there for the pre-conference, right? Yes, I'm happy to be.
Okay, so Kayla will be the delegate. Kirsten will be the alternate.
And I'll be there, I'll be there. If you have any questions, so we go for it.
This may be added to consent agenda.
Nothing like just throwing you under the fire. I'm just doing.
Alright, you guys, you guys good adding that to the consent agenda? Alrighty, so next week we'll authorize for committees to meet. And at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee or interviews applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 Alrighty, guys, you'll give us a few minutes.